Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the school committee meeting on this Wednesday, June 24, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that this is a virtual meeting via Zoom and broadcast on WCAT's Facebook Live page. I'd like to start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is the public comment. Keeping in line with the remote participation guidelines, we asked that anyone from the public who wishes to participate in public comments should do so via email to either myself or Superintendent Lyons. And seeing that we had not received any, I will move on. I do have a quick comment to make before we move on with the regular agenda. And if it's okay with everyone, I would like to just move forward and introduce our newest school committee member, Mike Boudreaux. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you very much.
If you would just like to say a few words and introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. I think I know most of you, but my name is Mike Boudreaux. I moved to Wakefield in 1993. I have three children. Sarah is 22, Matthew is 19, and Abby is 16. I've been involved in coaching hockey, soccer, and lacrosse for many, many years. I was on the hockey board for quite a while. I'm still on the soccer board, although trying to get off after 20 years. I'm on the TSF Board, the Wakefield Food Pantry, and Wakefield Senior Night. So I'm in the process of getting off the Scholarship Foundation Board as well because of being elected to the school committee. So I have met with some of you beforehand, so I appreciate that. And of course, the rest of you, I'd like to meet with a hand, even though she's not on the call, Chris and Tom, and obviously the school administration. I'll take the action item to try to schedule some time so we can get a chance to know each other as well. So thank you very much.
That's great. Looking forward to working with you this year.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the student advisory, but I don't think we have them tonight. I thought they were coming. So seeing that they are not here, I do want to wish Lilly Smith and Adriana good luck at college at Holy Cross. And I believe that Adriana is no longer going to UNH. She changed plans and is heading off to Bentley.
Bentley, it is correct.
So good for her. Congratulations, girls. And again, just thank you so much for, you know, doing such an amazing job in representing your classmates. Clearly, this was not an easy year for all of you, and you really kind of did some great work and impressed me with the way that you handled it through, you know, leadership and maturity. So really great job. One more quick note, we, I'd like to acknowledge that we do have some special guests with us tonight. We have a few of our retirees joining our meeting. And I know that Doug is planning to acknowledge you guys soon, so I just want to welcome you and thank you for joining our meeting. Next on the agenda is the consent. We have a motion.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of June 9, 2020, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the June 4, 2020, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the June 16, school committee labor and personnel subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Judy?
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Veier?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Mr. Callanan is not here. And Ms. Guida, I don't know if she can hear.
Okay. I don't think she's logged in yet.
Okay. And then Mr. Flynn is out as well.
Right.
And then Mike Boudreaux.
I'll be abstaining.
Okay.
Since I wasn't at the meeting, it's probably hard for me to vote on them.
Thank you.
Do we, do we need a quorum to be able to make that motion and vote on it?
Yeah.
I feel like we do.
We do.
Yes, Tom?
We actually have a quorum at the meeting, but we don't have four people who voted on the motion. So it wouldn't pass, is my point.
It's still, okay. It still passes?
It doesn't pass.
Oh, it does not?
Four people haven't voted in the affirmative.
Right.
Okay.
So perhaps we could, perhaps we could wait until either Chris or Colleen joins us, if they are. If not, we'll have to vote on it next meeting.
Okay, yeah. If Colleen ends up joining our meeting, then we can redo the motion.
Okay.
If not, we can hold off and do it at the next meeting. Thank you, Tom, for that clarification. Next on the agenda is Chair Comments. Just a few things I wanted to quickly go over the, for the working group, since Wakefield was recently approved by the MSBA for the high school project, the working group has, that was created last summer by the school committee, is now going to be merged with 12 additional community members. These new members applied to be on the committee and have been appointed by Steve Mayo. This new committee will now be referred to as the School Building Committee. And I believe that they are anticipating to meet sometime in the fall. So more to follow on that. Is there any discussion in regards to that?
Amy, can you clarify who, if we know yet from the school committee, is involved in that? Because it's not clear to me who's on that. I was on it in the spring or in the fall. It's just not clear to me who is representing from this group, or has that not yet been determined?
Well, I think it was the, the initial working group from last year. So Tom is Chair of the group, correct, Tom?
I actually serve as co-chair with the representative from the town council. The, this, this, so this committee, the School Building Committee, is really governed at this point by the rules of the MSBA. And so we took the working group that we had put together in the fall for the, sort of this, sort of the strategy group around what would happen if we didn't get the MSBA vote. That group wound up never having to convene, right? Because we were invited in. So that's the good news. And then the MSBA requires now a school building committee of a variety of constituencies around town. So we took the, the group that was assembled with the representative members, as well as the community members that are now required. And those were the 12 people that, that Ms. Purcell was referring to. So under, under those, under the, the sort of guidelines, the school committee appointee and the town council appointee are sort of co-chairs. So the two people appointed by the school committee back when we did this in the fall were Mr. Callanan and myself. That could certainly change if the school committee chooses, but that's, that's how the committee's been assembled. There was a list of all members that can certainly be incorporated into the, in the minutes of tonight, or certainly the minutes into, into a future meeting, but including all the 12 people that the town council appointed.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, so much for that clarification. Next is PD for school committee. I reached out to Dorothy Presser, who's the Field Director at the Massachusetts Association for School Committee Members, in regards to scheduling a possible professional development session for us. I just thought it would be a good idea for us to meet and review maybe some relevant topics that we, that can help us maybe carry out some of our responsibilities as school committee members, both old and new, now that we have Mike on board, as well as getting some new and important information regarding the COVID-19 outbreak and maybe some new challenges that that presents. So I am, I've been kind of going back and forth with her via email and waiting to just nail down a date. So I will keep you all posted on that when I do find out. Any questions in regards to that?
Madam Chair, I think Colleen has joined.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Hi, Colleen.
Looks like she's on mute, but it looks like she's here.
Got it. Thank you.
Amy, do you have a sense of when you're looking at? Are you looking at a summer, at summer dates?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really even discussed dates. It was just kind of a matter of us going back and forth. But, you know, I wouldn't mind maybe doing something over the summer if we could via Zoom before things kind of get super busy in the fall. But that is, that is the plan that we're going to try and do at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. For school committee goals, I'm still working on these, but some topics that I would like to include are definitely the COVID-19 and opening up schools in September and how that might look, budget items and issues, and also adding that new subcommittee that Tom Flynn had suggested a couple meetings ago that would focus on race and equity. And I know that Suzie, you sent me an email too about your thoughts. So thank you for that. And if anybody else has any ideas or thoughts about school committee goals, I will take that email and keep you guys posted. Anybody have any questions in regards to that? Okay, thanks, guys. I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll hand it off to Doug.
Amy, do we want to go back and redo the motion now that we've got Colleen?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Colleen, you, we need you for the consent agenda.
All right. So I'll read it again. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the June 9, 2020, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the June 4, 2020, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the June 16, 2020, school committee labor and personnel subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Judy?
Judy looks, oh, there she is.
She may be frozen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Can somebody else call the roll call? Like, can I? Or no?
Sure.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Guida? Oh, she's, Ms. Guida's talking to somebody.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Veier? Yes. Hopefully that counts.
Yeah, thank you. Voted unanimously. All right. Now, I do believe we're good to hand it off to Doug.
Thank you so much, Amy. Good evening, everybody. I hope everyone is well. Just some quick comments and updates. In regard to comments, we, School Department, participated in the town meeting last this past Saturday. Special thanks to Mr. Mayo for kind of designing and pulling off the town meeting. If he hadn't done that, I think we were concerned that we would have needed to go to a 1/12 budget, which I know some districts are doing, which would have been very, very difficult for us. And so we're pleased that we were able to get the town meeting in. The participation was actually very, it was very well attended. There was an outside area for people to attend. We also had air conditioning, which was a first in the field house. Could be a standard of things to come, maybe knock wood. But just to, just to give a quick update on that. So during the town meeting, there were two articles that affected us. One was our, our budget, School Department budget was approved and unanimously approved, which was fantastic. It is a decreased budget or an amended budget. So it's $400,000 less than the budget that we proposed back in March. But we feel that it is supportive of, of the town and the current situation and the financial kind of forecast, not only for FY '21, but for FY '22 as well. So we'll be reporting more information on that. We also had an article passed to support a new greenwood roof, which needed to pass a town meeting to initially fund the project. And half of that project will be refunded by the School Building Authority, the MSBA, as we go along. And so we need to thank the Permanent Building Committee and Joe Bertrand for his support in guiding that article to its passing. So that's just an update in regard to comments. Just an update in regard to opening school and information coming from the governor and from the Commissioner of Education. We anticipate that tomorrow, both the Commissioner and the Governor will be making an announcement on guidelines that they will be putting forth for school districts to reopen school in the fall. And so we do know that they have provided guidance for summer services for students, but those are different than the information that we will get, that we're anticipating receiving tomorrow. So, so more to come on that. I don't know if anyone has any questions in regard to those two pieces of information that I've shared so far.
Doug, it's Mike. Any sense of what to expect? Do you have any educated guess as to what we're going to hear?
So I think what we're hearing, Mike, is that we're going to need to provide protective equipment and, and protect, take protective measures, which could include masks and shields, depending on where we are and how we're teaching. We're also hearing that the state is, is going to continue to promote the things that they know have kept people safe so far. Social distancing, hand hygiene, you know, trying to, you know, make sure that if anyone is symptomatic in any way, shape, or form, that they don't attend school. And that's for students and adults. We're also, the big question, Mike, is whether they're going to promote a hybrid model, which is, you know, if, if, if remote is what we've been in, and that's one end of the spectrum, and, you know, coming back is the other end of the spectrum, a hybrid model would be something in the middle, which would mean something like, you know, kids would be in school some portion of the week, learning face-to-face with teachers, and then another portion of the week, they might be home learning remotely. And so, but again, it's premature. We haven't gotten that in print yet, but that's what we're hearing.
Great, thank you.
You're certainly welcome. Other questions? No?
Doug, sorry, I couldn't get myself off mute, off mute there. I realize you may choose, I don't know that you're going to want to answer this, and I feel like it's a little bit of a firestorm, but I'm going to ask it anyway. There's, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, we're not going to have art, and we're not going to have gym, and we're not going to have music, and we're not going to have specials, and we're just going to focus on core subjects. Is that something you expect to get guidance on tomorrow?
So I don't, I don't know if we will get guidance on that. Whether we do get guidance or whether we don't, if they leave it up to the local districts to make that decision, which I believe that they're going to leave a lot of this up to local districts, we are not getting rid of specialists. I just want to be crystal clear. We are not getting rid of specialists. We may not be able to fit everything in in a hybrid model, but that just means that we need to create a little bit of a different schedule for specialists to get them in. And so, so that's, that's what we're thinking. We, the plan is to be prepared. If we start in a hybrid model, Suzie, the plan would be to be able to scale up and go back full-time, or scale back down and go remotely, depending on either direction that we need to go. But the plan would be, I just want to be clear, would not be to get rid of specialists in, really in any way, shape, or form, right? It would be just a more of a challenge for us to figure out how to get specialists in, but we would still work to try to make that happen.
That's great. Thank you.
Certainly.
I'm sorry, Doug. I suspect, given what's going on across the country about the curve ramping up again, I imagine it's going to be somewhat conservative, the approach for now.
Yeah. One of, one of the concerns or fears is that if we go back in a hybrid model and we have limited time, FaceTime with students, that we're just going to try to cram in as much academic time as we can. And that's just not good for anyone, right? That's not, that's not a balanced approach. We really want to be thoughtful and create, create a plan that can work for kids over time, right? And so that's just a quick on that. Did I answer your question, Suzie? Great. And so again, there'll be more information. When we get guidance from the state, I just want to be clear with anyone who might be watching us, when we get guidance from the state, we will share the guidance, but then we need to take that and make it our own plan for Wakefield. And so that's something that we're going to be working on. And we think, to be honest, it's going to take probably three weeks after we get this information for us to kind of get a plan in print, three weeks or maybe four weeks. And so, but we will kind of keep you updated, both with the guidance from the state and also our kind of timeline in regard to how we're progressing with our plan. So that, that's an, that's an update there. Our 2020 retirees, we have, in the Wakefield Public Schools, you know, things that, that people often don't realize is that we have close to 570 employees in seven bargaining units, right? This year in 2020, we have 15 people retiring in several different units. We have some of those people joining us tonight. Normally, what we do when school is in session is we have a reception that lasts for about an hour to an hour and a half, where we get together, we talk, we recognize all of our retirees. And doing it via Zoom just seems really, it's a gesture, but it seems insufficient. So we might need to have this whole group reconvene with us if we can in the fall. But I'd like to read the list of retirees, and then I'd like to say a few words about our retirees that shared a little bit of information about themselves. Some were a little shy and didn't want to share some information, but I'd like to just share a little bit, right? Retiring, this year, we have Lisa Brown, Lois Salona, she's at Galvin, Jean Charros, who's at Doyle, Marie Chericello, Arlene Cohen at the high school, Mary Ann DeVito from the high school, Lisa Diso from Woodville, Barbara Durney from Doyle, school nurse, Kathy LaFonte from Galvin, Jane McConnell, Maureen McKinnon from Galvin, who's also the sister of Kathy LaFonte. That's a little trivia piece there. And Jackie Phipps is one of our bus aides. She's retiring. She's going to be missed. Gail Rivers from Food Services retiring. Deb Ryan, who's going to join us in a next meeting, where I'll be able to talk a little bit more about her service, as well as Joanne Ryan from Woodville as well. And so I'd just like to say a little bit about a few of our retirees. So Lisa Brown, I will tell you, is amazing. She's amazing. So she has worked for the town of Wakefield for 40 years. That's four zero, four decades. And when we think about service to a community, it doesn't get much better than this. You know, I've been here five, and I feel like a slacker in comparison. She's just terrific. And so she has worked for the police department. She's worked for town hall. And she's also worked for the school department, where she has been for the last number of years. She's been an assistant director of our food service program. And while we were hiring a new food service director this past year, she filled in as the director, okay? And is just really such a wonderful core values person and is, is so kind, not only to students, of course, but to, to her colleagues as well, and just has such significant relationships and has been amazing. And we're going to miss her terribly. The book that she is, is asking that we kind of donate on her behalf is The Power of Kindness. So appropriate, Lisa, so appropriate, right? And so it's by Mac Anderson, and that book will be able to be found in the high school library. So we want to thank you so much for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doug. It's been an honor and a privilege.
Yeah. So if we were in person, I would give you a big hug.
Thank you.
So I'd like to also recognize Lois Salona. Lois began her career in Wakefield in 2003. She started and completed her, her career at Galvin. She was a para in the, in the transition program. She worked with Ashley Fasulo. This program later became the TLC program and was really just an amazing resource for kids. She is going to be sorely missed. Next is Jean Charros, Jean or Miss Jean, as she's known at the Doyle School. You know, Jean is, you know, she moved to Massachusetts in 1985. You learn the craziest things when people are retiring. You know, her first job was milking cows at Richardson's Dairy, which is amazing, you know? And so, and has three degrees, one in special ed, one in reading, and one in physical education, which I had no idea about. But she's been an amazing resource for our preschool students and has worked at several schools in the district. And, and I can say that she will be missed at the Doyle School. Next is Marie Chericello. Marie began as a Title I aide at the Franklin School in September of 2000. In 2003, she moved to Woodville as a preschool aide. And then in 2006, she became a kindergarten aide at Woodville as well. And so, you know, to be a kindergarten aide is like God's work, you know? I mean, to guide little guys through their day and, and the patience and skill it takes, it's really quite impressive. Our next teacher that's retiring is Arlene Cohen, who's, who's at the high school. She's a world language teacher. And, you know, she has just been amazing. You know, she has been at the high school and so, for a number of years. And, you know, she reports that, you know, her greatest passion has been to act as a facilitator and an educator for young people, right? And to kind of help them to kind of communicate in a different language and to respect different cultures, right? Which is, is to say that she was before her time is, is, might be an understatement. Next person is Mary Ann DeVito, Mrs. D. And so Mrs. D started in DECA. So for those that don't know, the, the DECA store was kind of an entrepreneurial program for students that were interested in marketing, sales, and entrepreneurship. And so she started at the high school in 1983 with Miss Garagosian, and she worked in DECA for 25 years. And then she kind of worked her way out of there and completed her time at the high school, and she will be sorely missed. Next up is, is a teacher that's with us this evening is Lisa Diso. So Lisa worked, has been in education for 33 years, if I have this right, Lisa. Yeah? Lisa, I also learned from your, in your information, just looking over, that you worked with Dr. Irene Fontes, reading recovery of the famous Fontes and Penelope, right? And so, so impressive. And you were a kindergarten teacher for a number of years before becoming a reading specialist. Yeah. So, and, and correct me if I'm off, but you've been with us for the last, in Wakefield for the last 10 years.
10 years, yep.
So I will tell you, Lisa, you're one of the first people that I met when I came here as an assistant superintendent. And, and I'll never forget how kind and welcoming you were to me. And I want to thank you so much for that. And I want to wish you really the best in your retirement.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
So just a few more people. One is Barbara Durney, the school nurse at, at Doyle. And so you can see Barbara, you know, chasing a four-year-old down the hall with a pair of pants, or kind of, you know, tracking little guys down and getting them what they need. You know, for preschool, to be a nurse at preschool, you're such a resource for teachers and also for parents. If, you know, I remember as a young parent with my children, I'm needing the guidance of, of teachers in preschool. And Barbara is that resource for so many parents and so many families, and has become like another school administrator, where people have just relied on her so greatly. She's so She's so kind and so friendly. She is the funniest person she knows and often cracks herself up, which is a whole other conversation that we can cover at another time, but we will miss her terribly. Kathy LaFonte was hired in 2006 at Galvin. And it has been a para there and really has done similar work to so many others that really have just created the weather for kids. And so next up is a person who is, has worked as an ISP, but has two degrees, is really a teacher who's working as a para, and that's Jane McConnell. Right? For the people that are on this committee and for our district leadership, Jane, I don't even have to say your name as I start to describe your credentials. They know exactly who we're talking about. You know, you have been just a really significant ally and leader in the district. You've been president of your union. You've negotiated several contracts. You've been a resource for teachers, for new teachers and for new para educators. You've guided so many of our new employees and our veteran employees that have needed help, as well as students. You know, I talked about the work in the TLC program a minute ago. And I think that, you know, you've done so much for so many children that have needed so much help. We really can't thank you enough for that, right? So, so thank you. And I will tell you that you are going to be sorely, terribly missed. So thank you.
Thank you.
So just two more, Maureen McKinnon and Gail Rivers, and then I'll move on. But Maureen McKinnon, she also began her career in Wakefield in 1993. And she has been just really such a significant teacher and special education person for us. In talking with Adam Collin Tony and Andrew Tetralt about her work, you know, they describe her as someone that does such significant work with the younger middle school students and really helping them kind of get on a path to be successful. Where we see so many of these kids having success at the high school. And I think it's largely because of the work of Maureen McKinnon. And so, and the last person that I'd just like to introduce and recognize is Gail Rivers. You know, she reports that it all started with her when a friend told her about a food service position in Wakefield. And she thought it would be a nice opportunity for her to work and also balance her family needs. And she's, you know, she started work in 1998 as a substitute and is just retiring this year. You know, this type of longevity and the people that we're talking about are just really, really important to this community. You know, I think now more than ever, with all that's going on in the world, I think we're realizing in such an important way that, you know, the people make the place. You know, the people create the culture, the people create the feelings that, you know, that positive love and care and spirit that are in schools and all parts of the schools in the work that we do. So to our retirees, from all of the administrators that can't be here this evening, and for all of our faculty and staff, we want to say thank you so much. Thank you. So we will follow up with some more information on maybe getting together for that retiree recognition reception that we were not able to have due to our closure and kind of the coronavirus. But more information on that. Next up, I would like to introduce Danielle Collins to talk a little bit about nutrition and food service.
Hi there. How are you? So first of all, thank you to Lisa Brown and Gail and congratulations on their retirement. They're part of our group. So I just wanted to say shout out to them and thank you for all your great work over these years. I did want to share an update with what's been going on in food service in regards to our seamless summer model. When we, when all this happened and, you know, our school programming changed, we went to a summer seamless model, which is unusual. It's never happened in the history of school nutrition. And what that basically means is that our state decided that districts would be allowed to move to a meal distribution system. So in order to reach our students with meals in some way, shape or form, and every district looks different. And initially waivers were given for meal pattern procurement, reimbursement, consumption. There were, there were seven waivers initially given by the state. The expiration date of those waivers was June 30. And I'll explain to you what that means. All of the students that we provide for, for both breakfast and lunch were reimbursed at the free rate. Initially, it was only offered to those that were free or reduced qualification. And then when it switched over to the seamless summer model, literally anyone within our community that's 21 years or under is welcome to partake in our program. So in the Wakefield operations, how we did this is every single Wednesday from 10 a.m. until 12 noon, we distribute these meals. Parents don't have to sign up, but we do try to connect with them just to make sure that we're covering the children for allergies or any complications that may be there. And, you know, the families pull right up to our loading dock and we come out and we distribute the meal distribution for the week. Along with, and there was another program that we bid for to partake in, and it's called Farm to Families Fresh. And what this program means is that the farmers throughout our country are being forced to throw away perfectly good fresh fruits and vegetables. And their normal market is not available to them. So we actually bid by the pallet to bring in 56 cases of this product. So every family that comes through, we're also distributing a 20-box case of fresh fruits and vegetables. An example, the box that we distributed today had cantaloupe and Asian pears and romaine lettuce and carrots and apples and onions and just a plethora of whatever it is that our farmers have in abundance. And our participation has been great. It took a little while to get the word out, but I do want to share once again with the community that there is no, you don't have to sign up. You're more than welcome to just come. And that, just let us know how many kids you have in your family and you will be given a week's worth of meals for those kids, 21 or under. I actually calculated the amount of meals we've served so far, including today's numbers. And that number is 10,244 meals. So we just want to say thank you to the community for partaking. It helps our program. And we hope that we're there as, you know, in those who need help and those who just would like to partake, it helps our programs, it helps the community. It's win-win. And also a big thank yous to those within the community that have worked with us, both the Food Bank and some other organizations in just helping to reach the families and get the word out. I didn't know if you had any questions.
I don't know if anyone has any questions. If you do, it's a good time to ask.
I just want to say thank you so much. You know, I know that you have been working on a different program, obviously, with different goals. And it's just amazing, I guess. I mean, I knew you guys are busy and, you know, providing meals every Wednesday for many families. I just can't believe it was 10,244. That's unbelievable.
Yeah, I ran the math twice because I wasn't too sure. I just wanted to double check. You know what? I forgot to mention one thing. We are going to continue straight through till August 30. That was one of the major points that I'm sorry I forgot to mention, straight through to August 30. So I know there are families out there that think our program have ended, has ended, but it hasn't. So please come.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. That's amazing.
Again, I'm sorry, Amy. So Danielle, I'm on the food pantry board, so I'm amiss rate with what you've gone through. It's been amazing, the volume and kudos to you for all that you've done on your side as well. It's been challenging for all of us. And I want to recognize you, Doug. The advertising you put forward for us has allowed us to get tremendous funding. So we really appreciate that as well. Just switching hats for a minute. Now I'm back.
Yes, thank you. Colleen, did you have a question? You're muted. You're muted, Colleen.
Oh, reminder. Thank you. Sorry, Danielle, you kind of answered the question with, given the August 30 date. So given our reopening plan when we get guidance from the state, what do you think that might look like going forward? Do we, do we provide some sort of, you know, if kids are in school in a hybrid model, are we looking to provide meals in some way to support these families as well?
I am so glad you asked that because that was another very important point. What we were, what the state shared with us is that if we chose to continue through till August 30, it offers us the opportunity to continue if we begin the fall with a hybrid model, exactly as you pointed out. You know, regardless of what our needs have been, and we've been pretty consistent all the way through, I would be concerned about heading into the fall for that very reason. What if our model is that our students will attend in one week and then the second group of kids would be in week two? How are we providing for those kids in the off weeks? This, so the original proposal for this second extension, the original end date was going to be September 30. And when this second wave of legislation passed, it is August 30. But the conversation with the state has been and continues to be, once we have an opportunity to evaluate what our model looks like heading into fall, that's exactly when we'll put a continuation date. So once again, we applied for, through till June 30, and then I made amendments and we filed the continuation. That brings us till August 30. But if we did, if we decided per se that we would end on June 30, we would not be able to start in the fall, which was one of my, you know, I've had several conversations with Christine and Doug regarding this because then my concern would be, okay, so come September, if there's a need, you won't be able to restart. So yes, there'll be a straight continuation and I would imagine, basically to make all of these things happen, the state files a waiver with the USDA and we get approved at the federal level and the state level to bring it all full circle. But there are many that plan to continue through the summer. And I can only imagine that they'll continue to support us regardless of what the fall model looks like.
Right, okay. And also to echo the other committee members, just thank you for all that you're doing. This is insurmountable, the support that you're giving our families and community members and just making it so welcoming for them to come. And just that the program that you mentioned, the Farm to Family Fresh is just amazing. And your work to put that in place, it's really important. And even like bringing new foods into families that maybe haven't experienced, you know, fresh in that way. I think that's so exciting.
Well, thank you so much. And it couldn't be without the help of, I mean, all of our staff. They volunteered every single week all the way through. So kudos to them. We've been on a rotating schedule and everybody's done their share. And honestly, the farmers in our country, they need our help and our support. And once again, Mike, if I can share any additional information about your programs, we all work as a team within the community. Whatever I can do to help, I'm happy to and vice versa. I think that's how we really achieve our community spirit.
Yeah, absolutely. It goes the other way. If there's any time where the food pantry can help you, Christine, please reach out. We'll do whatever we can.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Christine. I just wanted again to give Danielle and her team a shout out because what they've been able to accomplish over the last 14 weeks for our families has been so tremendous. And the fact that we can continue is so great for Wakefield. So Danielle, you and your team, anything we've asked, you just have stepped up. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you. Please spread the word to your friends and neighbors. We're open for operation through till August 30. My little marketing plug.
You know, thank you so much, Danielle. And I'm glad that you said that, Christine. I think, I think what we're learning in our leadership positions is that our service to the community is a generative process. The more we do for other groups and the more we help families, the more it comes back around and it helps us as well, right? It's really, really been good for us as a group and as a school community to support the larger Wakefield community. And so I'm really, really proud of your leadership, Danielle, and what you've been able to develop. And so we can't thank you enough. So thanks.
And the gratitude, I have to say, from all of the folks that have participated, it means everything to them. Folks are facing tough times.
Yep. You know, the people behind the scene, the people behind the scenes with this, Sandy Calandrella, you know, Lisa Brown, you know, when people call up and they can't get here to pick up food, you know, they drop food off at people's homes, right? This is like a standard weekly occurrence when people are struggling and they, you know, need some help. You know, everyone always goes out of their way to try to get people whatever they need. And so those things are not small gestures that go unnoticed by, certainly by the people that we're serving. And so, and they often reach out to us to let us know after the fact that they're so grateful. You know, I'll get phone calls. Cara Morrow will get phone calls. Carol will be walking the lake and someone will stop her and say, you know, hey, you know, I don't know the name of the person in food service, but, you know, I couldn't pick up, so they dropped something off. So thank you. And just those small kind of gestures of kindness, they just mean really the world of difference right now. So thank you.
Yes, Colleen. I'm, you're muted again.
Sorry. I know I've seen a flyer, Doug and Danielle, but is there a quick way to access the approved flyer so that we can share that out? I imagine it's okay for us to share personally.
Yes, absolutely. And the other thing that I'd also like to point out is there will be additional marketing things happening. We received a grant, I applied for a grant from the EOS Foundation. And part of their support offers some marketing support. We're not allowed to proceed with that until July 1, which is next week. So I would love to share the flyer and then when this marketing blast happens, if you guys could just share the word.
You'll get that out to the committee.
Yes, absolutely. I'll do that right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, it's just such a, what a wonderful, what a wonderful bunch of information you just provided to us. It's amazing and looking forward to July 1 so that we can make sure that we blast all this new additional information to families in Wakefield. So thank you again so much for your hard work and your staffs.
Thank you for your support, all of you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. The last item that I have on my list are just extended year services. Lynn O'Neil lost power at her house, which included wifi. She was going to join us this evening, but I can give an update. I'll kind of pitch hit for her. And I know Carol can join in here as well. We are planning for a hybrid or a modified schedule for extended year services for students in special education. So the plan is for, to provide service to students remotely for three weeks. So we're going to do this for six weeks of the summer. But for the first three weeks, we're going to plan on remote service. And then for the last three weeks, we're going to have a modified schedule where students, we're going to bring students back for one to two days a week. And that's going to be at the Woodville Elementary School. And so we walked the school this past Monday. We've been working with the director of facilities to talk about, you know, where the nurse's office will be, what we need for PPEs, what we need to create for schedules. And Lynn, right now, is working with her staff and families to make schedules for students for the last three weeks of that program. So that will be happening at the end of July, moving into August. And so there'll be more information to follow there. And all of these plans, I need to preface all of this by saying that, you know, all of these plans are predicated on a continued positive trend with our public health data and our ability to do this safely. And so I'll probably be reporting, like I'll be reporting on the fall schedule, I'll be giving updates in our future school committee meetings on our summer services. Do you want to add, Kara?
Sure. I can just give an, I can give an update on the academy side of things if that would be helpful. Estelle Burdick, our director of our academy, has been working hard. I'm putting together a summer program that, you know, just by the nature of everything is quite different than years past. So she, she first started with survey, surveying parents regarding interest on an academic virtual type program. And then she's also been recruiting staff. So, the way, the way it all shook out with parent interest as well as staff she could recruit, she's now developing a program that is focused on grades, rising students K to five was the population that showed the most interest in the staff she was able to get. So, she's setting it up in a really nice way. It's a five-week program. And the academic enrichment areas are ELA, math, and science. And parents can sign up for a five-week program, which is at a flat, a flat rate of $115 per course. So, for five weeks, it's one hour, a one-hour course, four days, four days a week. And it's going to focus on academic enrichment by grade level. So, they're going to break up the student groups by grade level, have about eight students to a teacher. And the goal is to make the lessons highly engaging and to prepare students for the next grade level. So, I think she's gotten some good interest there. Brian Robertson has also been hired to help us with, to coordinate some summer at our high school level. And he's working with students who need credit recovery. And he's also worked to help get a couple of high school enrichment courses off the ground. And he did a nice job recruiting staff and getting proposals for targeting our high school students. And again, those run based on enrollment. And last I checked with Estelle today, it looks like she has three that are definitely going to run. One is focused on summer theater. The highest attended or enrolled one is academic survival for high school. So, I don't know if that was a lot of parents pressuring their kids to sign up for that, but that's our highest enrolled right now. And Jason Pavey and Aaron Creesos are going to be running that. It looks like a great, great program. And science of cooking, one of our high school science teachers was organizing, Kristen Brazil, a science of cooking class. So, that's enrolled and will run. And we're waiting on a couple of others to see if we get the enrollment. History of computers with Jimmy Martin was one. And then a thrive course with Suzanne Burns, which is around mindfulness and social emotional wellness, which looked really great, too. So, that's, so that, those are all running virtually as well. So, I know that Estelle got the registration out today to parents. So, we'll see, you know, how that shakes out in the students that we get. And then I have to imagine it will come down to grouping students and then getting, getting schedules out. So, I think it should be, I think it should be a nice option, you know, given the circumstances. Ideally, we'd rather have kids in person, but I think this is a good second option, given the circumstances.
I just have a few questions. The timing for the high school, is that, when would that run virtually?
So, I believe, and I'm sorry, Amy, I don't have the exact on the high school. I know the academy K to five got pushed back a week and is starting, is going July 13 to the week of August 14. The high school sessions may vary based on which one is, which one, the summer theater, the academic. I think they, they might have their own timelines. They might run five weeks, they might run two. I'll have to follow up. I can email you that information. I just don't have it with me right now.
Yeah, thank you. And then Doug, you had mentioned one, the hybrid model, and then for three weeks, and then the kids returning possibly to the Woodville. Just because it's at the Woodville, does that just include only elementary students? Or like, what kind of program is that? Is that separate from the academy program?
It is separate from the academy, and the target group is for students that have received extended year services in the past.
Okay.
Right? And so they're, it's a special education cohort that has built-in services that have come in the summer. And so, I think that there's an age range. I know predominantly, we're going to have elementary kids, but there'll be some middle school students there as well, is my understanding.
Okay.
I can give you more information in our next meeting, Amy?
Okay.
Yeah.
So, kind of keeping in line with maybe their IEPs and trying to provide those services for the summer.
Correct, correct. The idea of doing this in the summer and trying to get students in, you know, is, is for, there's a couple of different reasons that we are really eager to do this. One is that, you know, remote learning has worked well for a lot of kids, and for a number of kids, it hasn't. You know, and for our most vulnerable learners, you know, they need time with teachers face-to-face. And we want to provide that as soon as we possibly can in a safe way. And so, that's, that's our primary reason. Our next reason for really wanting to do this is it will give students an opportunity, it will give them a head start to get acclimated back into a school schedule. And then the third reason is, and we think is as important as the other two, is it will give us kind of a beta test or a test space to see what it's like to bring students back with PPEs and in kind of a restrictive environment, right? So, we feel like, you know, we walked the Woodville with two of our nurses, Kelly Quahley and Mary Doherty. And so, just to kind of talk about how to do this safely, you know, where would the nurse's office be if we needed to quarantine students? How would we do that? And so, we're really trying to learn before we bring larger groups back. So, we think it's really a nice opportunity and a really needed opportunity for students, but it's a nice opportunity for us to really learn how to do it before we need to bring back larger groups in the fall.
And did you give us a timeline on when that would begin?
It's my understanding that we're going to start the second week in July.
Yeah, yes, Doug, I think you're correct. I think the first three weeks virtual are starting the week of July 6, and then I believe the week of July 27 is going to be hopefully the in-person.
Yep.
Great, thank you so much.
And if I can just, oh, go ahead, Doug, sorry.
No, go ahead, Cara.
I just was going to add one last point, switching gears, but if you had something else on special ed, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that, you know, again, all of this is, you know, if we can, we might have to expand or contract our schedule depending on, you know, how to do it safely, right? And so, there'll be more information, but our goal is to get students in two days a week on a modified schedule for three of those weeks, the last three weeks in the program. That's our goal.
And I was just going to add, related to our English learners, in past summers, we've also tried to provide services for our English language learners. And this summer, we're going to try to do that as well. It's looking a little bit different. I've been speaking with Colleen on as our ESL coordinator, and she's in the process right now of surveying parents just to see what the interest might be. I think the remote learning format has been challenging for our English learners. And so, we're hoping that if we can get in-person later in the summer, that that would be a nice option. So, right now, Colleen's in process of surveying parents to see if we could offer an in-person tutorial or academic support at the end of the summer. Would you be interested? And then the same with recruiting staff. So, we have internal ESL teachers that we'll be reaching out to, as well as we've had ESL teachers from other districts as well work for us in the past. So, that's still in the works, but it's something that we're hoping to do in-person towards the end of the summer.
Thank you. That sounds great. Does anybody else have any questions for Cara or Doug?
Amy, I have one question. Doug, I know Amy and Claude's not on the call, but maybe you can help. My understanding is there's a meeting, I think it's July 15, for the Senior Events Planning Group that's been getting together. Is the expectation that they'll make a decision on the 15th or the 16th about prom or alternatives? Or do you have any sense of that?
I don't, Mike. I can report out on this on the, on the next, in the next meeting. And so, that's, or I can get you the information, the email it to you before then.
No, that's fine. The next meeting would be absolutely fine. By the way, just on a side note, you know, obviously, it's a thankless job, and there's no right answer with graduation and everything else, but everybody certainly tried to do the best. And my hope is some of these things that we've come up with this year become ongoing events, like the parade, maybe the banners. So, kudos to everybody involved in that. Really worked well.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
All right, Mike, I mean, Doug, are you all set?
That's it for me, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, budget items, Christine.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair and school committee members. Tonight before you, we have just to approve the, the user fees for next year. And I just want to start in doing so, I went back over what was in the budget book and what the sheet that was in the budget book wasn't the final draft that was voted on from school committee. So, what you see before you tonight on your sheet is the fiscal 20 user fees that are now in place, which were voted on last year, and the fiscal 21 proposed for next year. We're proposing to keep all fees exactly the same as they are, no increases for next year for multiple reasons. We don't know what's going to happen with transportation. We don't know what's happening with our families. So, we just felt with what's going on with the pandemic, just to keep all the fees the same. So, you can also see the revenue sources also for the rentals. Everything has been kept the same as last year. Actually, the rental fees haven't been changed in quite some time. But that's for your approval tonight. I don't know if you have any other questions about that.
Yeah, Tom.
Thank you, and thanks, Christine. No, it's not so much of a question as it is a point of support that we get the fact the finance, our committee level had been discussing the fee structure since really the, well, back in the fall and in the early winter. So, I certainly think it's a terrific idea that the administration, you know, bring, bring forward a level, level, effectively, you know, level costing for specialty fees with so many variables, some of which we know and probably a dozen more that we haven't even conceived of. And to rely on additional resources, if we were to raise the fees, would probably be just foolish, frankly. So, I think it's most appropriate and frankly, fiscally conservative appropriate to leave the fees as they are. So, certainly, I think it's a wonderful idea and endorse the administration's proposal on that.
Thanks, Tom, especially what we went through this year with the refunds to parents for athletics, for transportation. So, we don't know what the model's going to look like. And I know in the past, I think transportation's maybe gone up $5, but it just seemed, without knowing what's going to happen, it just seemed irresponsible to look to increase these fees at this time.
Yep. I agree all loudly. Thank you.
Any other questions? Colleen.
This is somewhat related, Christine, but just the conversation based on the guidelines coming from the state and our activities, you know, after-school activities, sports, theater and whatnot. Is that sort of another section to be addressed? You know, it's gathering in a different way. So, just because we might return and reopen in whatever way we do, that doesn't inform fully how activities look. That's sort of a separate discussion, and then fees after that.
Look, I think it's part of the whole conversation that's about to be rolled out, right? Scheduling, it's part of, it ties into academics, it ties into transportation, it ties into everything that we do. To look at social distancing, what that means for teams, for practices. I have a teenage son who's going into senior year, and he is just dying for football season to start. So, like, everyone's waiting to hear what that's going to look like. So, right now, I just thought that if we set the fee schedule and we move forward, and then we'll have to adjust when we get the guidance.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Yep. Move that the school committee approve the proposed FY21 fees as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Judy.
Microphone's off.
Yeah. See you.
Are you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
I froze. Sorry.
We're playing poker.
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Vayer.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
And Mr. Boudreau.
I will guess on this one. I'm bored of this one.
That's great, thank you. And gifts? We have a.
We have another gift from the Silk Title Company. And it is to help us with technology, with the summer feeding program, and basically to cover all the extra COVID-19 costs that we've been enduring to kind of get things up and running. It's so generous, and we want to thank the donor for this generous gift, and it's going to help us tremendously in Wakefield.
So, this is, this is Mark Trattenberg and the Trattenberg family. They have been, to say that they've been generous is an understatement. This last donation brings his total giving from, from June until now to $101,000, 101,500. So, and the reason why it's an odd number is because a portion of his donation was gifted to pay off the balances in food services that families had. So, but he's been just so, such a significant generous person that, you know, his kindness is amazing. And we are very grateful to both he and his family, so.
Yep, absolutely. Incredible. So, motion?
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $40,000 from the Silk Title Company. The funds are to be used to assist in the summer food program.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Okay. Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Vayer.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
And Mr. Boudreau.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you again. It's just, it's just unbelievable, the generosity. So, you know, we really appreciate it, and thank you all so much for that. And moving on to the agenda for subcommittee reports, finance and facilities. Chris is not here tonight. Do you want me to give a quick review or? Okay. We met last Thursday. Christine updated us on some fiscal year closeout issues, finalizing POs, imperial encumbrances, PPE orders and grants. She also informed us that the three-year contract had been signed and posted. Christine gave us some updates on the CARES Act, and we did discuss fiscal year '21 budget planning. And as of last week, we did not have any new guidance from the state, so that's kind of where we left it there. Bob was also not at the meeting, but Doug did give us some updates on the facilities. And apparently, the Galvin Coring project is progressing. And the Doyle sprinkler work, is it done or being done? I can't remember, Doug.
Being done.
Okay. So, those are the notes that I had from the meeting, just to give you a quick update. And we are actually meeting tomorrow morning, so more to follow on that. Labor and personnel, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as I announced at the last full school committee meeting, there were three matters with regard to Unit A that were, that were on the table. They are, each of them are unrelated to negotiations that have already closed. They were really all related to matters with regard to COVID-19, how the, how the last 61 days of the school year went, and a bit of looking and planning into next year. So, there were three matters, as I, as I announced. One was supervision and evaluation, how that was to be handled by the administration, both the superintendent's office and each of the principals' offices. We needed to have a plan with regard to stipends for coaches for spring sports and a discussion and a plan around the issuing of assignment letters or appointment letters, right, for next school year. So, if I could, I'd like to ask both Doug and Christine to help with this one. There are three matters on the table. There are three matters on the table, so why don't we all take one, if I could be so bold? Doug, can we do the supervision and evaluation piece? Can I ask you to provide the update on that and where we landed?
Yes, and so we created a memorandum of agreement with Unit A in regard to supervision and evaluation. And essentially, we took, so it was the way the model was created, similar to the majority of districts in our area. If, so for our PTS teachers, our professional status teachers, their evaluation rating was the last rating provided. For our non-PTS teachers, their evaluation was created based on the formative evaluation meetings that they had at the mid-year. So their end-of-year rating was based on the mid-year rating that they received because of our closure, right, in March. And so that's what we agreed to. It's not radical stuff. You know, it was kind of fair, it was equitable. And we think it really supports our teachers really well and the WEA supported it unanimously as well.
And so we, and just to fill in a little bit more and adding to that, the subcommittee, when we met last week, also had lots of discussion around that. It was a very good conversation, very healthy, very rich with regard to the amount of thought that Doug and the principals, as well as some initial conversations that Unit A leadership had. And we felt well-prepared as a subcommittee to recommend an endorsement of that proposal that the superintendent was bringing forth. So I know the confidence level is incredibly high. Obviously, that Unit A is supportive of that. Wanted to, we really wanted to give, and I think it's representative of the the good relationship that we have with all employees, never mind Unit A members in this regard, that we really wanted to give everyone the best chance toward performance and improvement without really holding over their heads things that are in many ways outside of their control. So really, the best model for that, that we felt, and as Doug said, many school districts were doing that, was really to use an evaluation for the end of FY20 really was what they received for the end of FY19. With the exception of certainly anything that may be extraordinary that a principal may have brought forward. But it seemed the subcommittee was unanimous in its support that this is not only fair but entirely appropriate, given the circumstance we were in. Item number two with regard to the stipends, I would, I'll take the lead on presenting that one. So we had done a lot of, we've had a lot of conversation around that and the, and Unit A provided us with some data, much of which was similar to data that Doug and Christine had found in reaching out to other districts, both those that are immediately around us as well as those that are most like us. And we found it was really all over the page on how districts were handling compensation for spring sports coaches. Some districts were paying the coaches as if it were regular season and paying it 100%. Some were paying nothing, somewhere, somewhere in the middle and somewhere, somewhere more what I would consider maybe a token or a very small amount. So we really had to start from scratch almost and give it some real concerted thought. So the thought that we brought forward with Doug and the subcommittee was to think of the, of a sports season, in this case, the spring sports, but really all sports as having three essential functions for coaches. Function one would be preseason work and the communication required between the coaches and the players and the coaches and the parents. Function two would be all the work required for practices and workouts and, you know, game prep. And function three would be games and postseason, if applicable. So we thought it most fair to divide it in that way, especially because we really like to, as has been part of our work here in Wakefield and even in this committee for the last number of years, is to really put something together that we can define and defend as opposed to really just sort of throwing a dart against the wall and say, let's, you know, pay 50% or something or pay some other amount that really isn't, doesn't have much strength or backbone to it. So with that in mind, that's where we landed, that's where we landed at coming up with those three essential functions. Believe that it was also most fair to have whatever we were going to recommend apply to all coaches, not just head coaches or really not treat people differently because of the type of work that all coaches perform in support of athletes, both on and off the field or the court. And even given during this time, that support was still really well felt. So certainly, function number one of the three that I just listed, we really felt very, very comfortable and secure in saying was certainly accomplished. On any preseason work required, as well as the communication piece, not only was it done, but it was done very well in the cases for athletes. I know from my own experience, my daughter being a senior or now a graduate, but nonetheless, as on the girls' lacrosse team, the relationship that the girls and Coach Luca had and the other coaches was just extraordinary. The work that they kept doing and communicating with the athletes and staying in touch and just being another trusted adult in these young people's lives is incredibly, right, incredibly part of what coaching is. So we were incredibly comfortable in bringing forth the recommendation, given the three-part sort of scenario, that we would recommend paying the coaches effectively 33%. That a third of the work out of that equation was done, done well. And it is, would be appropriate and fair to bring forward that recommendation, not only in recognition for the work the coaches did, but also in appreciation for it. Because certainly, the work after school was closed and after it became apparent by the MMA, MIAA that things weren't coming back, these coaches continued the outreach, continued to talk to their athletes and provide support and provide guidance and even just some of it, especially for the senior kids, were just helping wind down the year in a very, very, very different year. So the recommendation from the administration and the subcommittee is to award 33 1/3, meaning 1/3 of the work being done and therefore 1/3 of the stipend. Doug or Christine or Colleen, did that summarize that fairly well?
I think you covered it really well.
Okay.
Hey, Tom. Has that been dispersed to the coaches yet?
No, it would be, this is the night where we need, we, the Labor Relations Subcommittee, need to report back these three items to the full school committee. Yep, and it will be done upon our consent.
Got it, thank you.
Third item that we brought forward was the issuance of staff assignment letters. Christine, can I call upon you to fill us in on that one?
You may. So last week, the assignment letters went out in two different formats. They went out, physical letters were mailed out on the 18th to all staff, all unit members, all bargaining units, all principals, administrators. Everyone got an assignment letter, basically to let them know what the role for their position was going to be for next year. There is, there was, our attorney basically also advised us to add a caveat to that letter, basically saying, because we don't know what the schedule is going to be for next year we reserve the right as a district to reassign at any time to kind of look at schedules as needed, just to let people know, you know, there's more to come on this. But it's very important in these times to let people know that we're holding all positions. No one's being laid off. Everyone who has a job is keeping their job and those were mailed out on the 18th. We also electronically sent the letters on the 19th on the advice of school committee. Thanks, Tom. We sent those out electronically on the next day. So we've gotten a couple of questions on that, only from people who were supposed to submit their transcripts in order to move up to the next column or lane on the teacher's group. So we're sort of still looking on some of those transcripts. But I've really got some responses, thank you so much. I was worried about what next year is going to look like, thank you. I feel comforted knowing I have this position. Some people never got a letter before. We sent letters out to traffic supervisors, just, we just wanted to let everyone know you have a role and this is what you're going to be doing when you come back.
So if I could, just to hop in there and one, on behalf of the Labor Subcommittee, thank you, Christine. I know that was a tremendous amount of work. But one of the things that just even to, not just to remind the committee, but more importantly, remind the community and frankly, all of the school district employees, right? Because our, one of our other hats, roles is that of employer. And we had spent as a full committee discussing within the last month or two, certainly ever since the town asked us to, to plan on a $400,000 cut, we had spent a great deal of time, both at full school committee meetings like this one as well as subcommittee meetings, about how are we going to be looking at that and all of the different approaches. And one of the things that I think is most appropriate is that where we've landed, even there are different scenarios on the table, none of which have been decided. But certainly, one of the things that we've seen pretty much in strong, if not unanimous support, was to do everything we possibly could, right, to leave the district staff intact, to do everything we could to cut positions for the, meaning to make up the $400,000, to do everything we could to not fill vacancies, to really strongly consider either vacancies, resignations or retirements, before they be filled, what else could we possibly do? And prioritizing, of course, needs that the district had in terms of student service, both academic and social emotional, and with what is the great unknown, which even as of tonight is unknown with regard to guidance and direction from Department of Education. So it gave us, I think, great comfort and hopefully gave the staff great comfort that even though there may be some reassignments required for meeting the either academic or social emotional needs of the kids, the staff that we have intact is quite capable and able to do that. So I know that it's an awful lot of work in getting that done for every employee, but it was incredibly important in our collective role. I think as Chair of Labor Relations, I guess on behalf of us, hopefully I'm not overstating that it was incredibly important for our work as an employer to make sure that the staff can enter the summer months without the anxiety of knowing if they have a job in, you know, in 60 days, right? So.
Exactly.
So thanks so much for that, Christine. That was really an awful lot of work for your team to do and June's a busy enough month, but, and we just threw one more at you, but really, thank you for that.
It's good, no, I didn't do it by myself, trust me. The team in the office, it was all hands on deck and, no, I mean, the response I've gotten from staff, I mean, it's really some uncertain times and people have anxiety. And just to get that letter, the comfort, just to know, I'm coming back, this is the school I'm going to be at, thank you so much. I can kind of take a breath and regroup, recruit. Thanks.
So was that, oh, Doug, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I just wanted to just add a context piece here. You know, Christine got these letters out with our office staff that is working still on a modified schedule, right? So our offices are not completely open. So this took several long, long days and it's, Christine, greatly appreciated. So thank you for that. And the email was icing on the cake, so. But thank you, it's good, Tom, good advice. And Christine, thank you for working with your team to pull that off.
Of course.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would have a motion. Would that be appropriate now?
Yes, actually, thank you.
Well, I make a motion that the school committee accept the report and recommendation of the superintendent and the Labor Relations Subcommittee as presented.
Second.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Judy?
Mr. Markham.
Yes.
Ms. Vayer.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Ms. Guida.
Yes.
Mr. Boudreau.
You're muted.
Yes, sorry.
Now you're one of us, Mike. Okay, thank you. Moving on to subcommittee reports, student services. We have not met, so I have nothing further to report. Policy and communications, Suzie.
Yep, we are slated to meet tomorrow night, so I will have an update at the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Future dates and agenda items. Our next virtual school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 14th at 7:30. School committee comments. I'll go around where you guys are on my screen. Tom.
Thank you. Certainly a welcome to Mike Boudreau. Congratulations on a hard-fought election yesterday. Welcome aboard, my friend. I look forward to not only working together on many issues, but working collectively as a strong team. We have a difficult set of months ahead of us and very much am thrilled that you're joining us and bringing all your experiences forward. So thanks, one, for stepping up, I guess, and notwithstanding my attempt at humor regarding yesterday's election, but nonetheless, certainly welcome, Mike, and welcome aboard. Also, one more, you know, thanks to Anne Fortier. As I sort of, I didn't really think at the last meeting, when I was asking for one more subcommittee meeting, but Anne did join us, so we did have a full subcommittee. And so we had another round robin of, at the end of the subcommittee meeting, another round robin of thank yous to Anne. But so she had one meeting beyond the last full meeting. But nonetheless, moving forward, I wanted to also recognize and thank the superintendent and business administrator and their team for leading up to the work of town meeting last Saturday. That lots of balls in the air, some of them still in the air, but a concise and professional set of proposals was assembled, was put together, was taken apart, was re-put together. And I think not only did the town administration and town officials appreciate that, but I fully believe that the townspeople and taxpayers assembled it as well. So thank you for that. I know there's more work to be done, of course, some of it difficult, but we're in a, we're at least in a now more solid footing having town meeting support behind us. And just lastly, to thank the town. That can never be understated, the work that we all do, right, from meeting to meeting and in between. But to thank town meeting attendees and taxpayers for, again, support for the Wakefield Public Schools. Still work to do, but there's very overwhelming support of the budget as presented, the school committee budget as presented, and as Doug mentioned earlier, the Greenwood Roof. So the town is in good shape financially, even though we're in a difficult time. And just a great thank you for all the work that everyone did to get ready for it. And thanks, thanks to town meeting attendees for the support and acknowledgement of that work. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Colleen. Thank you, Tom. Colleen?
Yes. To Mike, please, just extend a welcome to you. It's definitely an interesting and tricky time to come into something like this. And I think we're all appreciative of you stepping up, as Tom said, into a role, in particular in this time. You know, you kind of jump right into it and I appreciate you just being so engaged in, in your first meeting and tuned in. And I know the broad perspective that you bring, so I'm really excited to be able to work with you in the future. And then when we get past this, you know, moving on to lots of other things, so. Congratulations. Had everything well yesterday. And I just wanted to also thank and recognize the retirees that were already spoken about. I think that, as Doug mentioned, they bring such an invaluable support to not only the current staff, but when we have new hires coming in, they provide that loyalty, consistency, expertise, and just, you know, an overall amazing perspective that, you know, can't be replicated in any other way. So I really look forward to being able to see them in person, hopefully in the fall, and giving them a proper farewell. And also, Tom, thank you for mentioning just the town meeting. Most of us were able to attend town meeting and I am thoroughly and continuously impressed with the way that our town manages themselves, especially in this climate. I don't, you know, I've not gone to other towns' town meetings, but to walk into the field house and have it be set up the way it was where people felt comfortable. And they, there was a high level of participation, as Doug spoke about, you know. You know, there are always the same players who come and speak and are always engaged, but I was really just so happy to see that we, we had a lot of new faces there and that our town was able to, you know, navigate that in a safe way and make people feel comfortable to come and get up to the mic and talk. And it didn't feel rushed, I don't think, in any way, even though I think the meeting was about six hours. You know, so it was long and lengthy, but so important for us to be able to move forward into this new fiscal year with some sort of plan and some sort of, you know, confidence, even though there are so many questions surrounding it. And specifically to our, our team in the district, Doug and Christine specifically here and all of your staff. I'm just so proud that you guys, you know, you present yourselves always in an organized fashion, even though we're in a disorganized time. So congratulations and thank you. I don't think that anyone could have said anything negative about the way that things went on Saturday. That's all for me.
Thank you, Colleen. Suzie?
So, Mike, I, like everyone else, is very excited to work with you. I had the pleasure of meeting you kind of when you were deciding to run or soon after you pulled your papers and I think you're going to bring a great perspective, having seen kids come through the system, have a child in the system, and just kind of your financial background. I'm really looking forward to having you kind of on the team and, and yeah, I think you're gonna, you're gonna be a great committee member. So looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Only other thing I would say is I'm, I'm looking forward to the guidance coming from the state tomorrow and I wish you guys luck with waiting through it and trying to figure out how we make it work for Wakefield. You know, I feel like if it's not one thing, it's another. And you guys just have, you know, keep kind of knocking down the pins and figuring out kind of our next thing. And this next thing is really big. I think, you know, people are anxious and, but certainly I think you have the support from the whole committee to kind of take your time and, and figure out kind of what's best for Wakefield. And, and I'm looking forward to at least getting an update at the July 14th meeting on kind of where things stand. So appreciate the continued hard work that, that you guys are putting into figuring out, closing out the year, getting us through the summer and getting us off to a good start. So thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Okay, Mike, you're up.
Yeah, I was hoping with the delayed election, this whole COVID-19 thing would be done by the time I showed up, but clearly that didn't happen, so. Opportunities there. First of all, thank you for the welcome. I really appreciate that a great deal and I am very excited to do what I can to help out in any way, shape, or form. Looking from outside of this bubble, you know, I think everybody I've talked to has said the worst job to possibly have over the last three months has been as a school administrator. So I certainly greatly appreciate the hours, countless hours, that have been spent. But I equally appreciate the teachers. I can only imagine what a kindergarten teacher does with a Zoom meeting with, with 12 children. God bless them in that regard. And obviously, the kids of, you know, having children, a child in the system, how difficult it was for them to get through this. And we did, and we'll get through the fall too, whatever form that ends up being. And so thank you all very much and I'm really looking forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Mike. I do have a, oh, yep, Colleen?
Sorry, Amy, before, can I just do one quick shout out to WCAT as well? I hope you guys can hear. And I'm sorry that I forgot you in my thank yous, but you, you guys are just unbelievable. Hands down, at the town meeting, always you're unbelievable. But what you pulled off at town meeting was incredible. I know Ian was very busy up and down, changing the mic covers and all, but I mean, that's silly with all the rest of the stuff that you've done. I am, I am so proud that we live in a town that supports community access television. We have such an experience and talented staff because I was just blown away by what you provide for us. So thank you.
There's the man behind the screen right there. We usually don't see you, Rock. It's good.
I know. His face.
I'll take the opportunity to say thank you all. Truly appreciate it. Absolutely.
Thank you, absolutely. I just have a few things to say. I just want to, you know, wish our graduates congratulations. It was really a pleasure of mine to be part of their very special day. Couple of weekends ago, it was absolutely beautiful. So congratulations to them. And now that the school year is officially over, I'd like to just quickly thank our teachers and staff and administration, you know, for all their hard work and dedication to our students. I mean, no one knew way back in March how the school year would end up looking like 61 days later. But I really just am blown away and I think it's actually remarkable how our teachers and the staff and administrators just immediately switched gears, went right into Learn Anywhere, implemented it right away and other sorts of remote programs. Nobody kind of knew what Zoom was before March 12th or whatever date it was. And now it's all everybody ever says. So you know what, they, they really just seamlessly made this switch. And, you know, I'm forever grateful and it's just a testament to how amazing our teachers, our staff, and administrators. So thank you all so much for that. And I'd also like to, of course, congratulate our retirees. And thank you all so much for your years of service. You know, our schools are such a special place. And, you know, like Doug always says, it's the people who work there that make them so special. So you certainly are going to make it hard to fill your shoes. But, you know, I wish you all the very best and thank you so much again for your years of service and making Wakefield District, School District, a better place. And again, one more or two more, thank you to the Silk Title Company. Again, I'm just blown away by their, just such generous donations to the Wakefield Public School Systems. And, you know, I just really want them to know how much I'm grateful for their service or donation. And then lastly, of course, to Mike, welcome and congratulations. And yes, we'll have an interesting year, so. Hold on.
Thank you.
So that is it for me. Doug, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Thank you, everyone, for the kind words. Michael, welcome. I'm much really happy that you're here. And like Tom said, the tough, the tough race. And glad you pulled it out and glad you, glad you're here.
I just eked it out, Doug.
You know, all joking aside, Michael, one of the things you said I think is critically important for us to keep coming back to, which is, you know, the problems that arise. We will, we will also kind of rise to the occasion and kind of take them as they come and we will work through it. I think that we have seen that over and over again throughout the spring. Our teachers have stepped up, our town has stepped up, our parents and families have stepped up. And so we will continue to do the same and to take what comes in the fall. So thank you, everybody. We, on the administrator's side, appreciate the support more than you know.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have a motion?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of June 24th, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mr. Markham?
Yes.
Ms. Fair?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Ms. Guida?
Yes.
Mr. Boudreaux?
Thank you. That wraps up our meeting for tonight, June 24th. I hope everybody has a great night and happy summer. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night. Good night, all.